Good evening. Welcome to the October 7, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 5:30 discussing personnel matters. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we've got quite a few participation in government students here this evening. Who's here for that? Okay. Your requirement is to stay till nine o'clock. If we're still going on at nine o'clock, we'll take a break from the meeting. You'll come up and you'll sign out. There will have sign-out sheets here. And if you have any sheets that you need board members to sign for you, we will do that. If the meeting gets done before then, then just come up at the end of the meeting. Introductions.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Steever.
Lynn Lenhart.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Weidersinger.
Christine Beck.
And Judy Kehoe.
Okay. First order of business. Oh, yes. And Joanne Cunningham is not here. Her mom passed away last week, so we express our sympathy to Joanne and her family. First order of business, minutes from the September 16, 2015 regular board meeting?
Second.
That's the first and a second. Any discussion? On favor, aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Student Senate report. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate? Great. Could you come over to the microphone and state your name?
Pull it out.
Yeah.
This is good?
Yep.
All right. My name is Ned Engelbrei. One of the presidents. And at Student Senate, we're working on the dodgeball that's coming up in November 2 to the 6th. Working on the dodgeball tournament. And we're also helping out with the St. Catherine's Center for Homeless. We're doing a fundraiser over at the Elsmer Fire Department on November 6th, on Friday, starting at seven o'clock. It's pretty much a sleepout for the homeless. We're all gathering money around the Student Senate and as a school to try and raise money to support the homeless. And we're also sleeping out all night at the firehouse. And there'll be a bonfire for us to go. So it's pretty much seven to seven from November 6th to the 7th. And we're working on that.
Great. Anyone have any questions? Good luck with that. Is that open just to students or community members also?
Community members, too. There's going to be all the news stations there and some of the police officers are coming, too.
Okay. Great.
Where would people go if they wanted information about that event, like a community member?
It's St. Catherine's. They have a website. And under, I think it's Events, they have the Sleepout for the Homeless at Elsmer. Thank you.
It's also posted on our website on the community page.
Great. Good luck with those events.
Thank you.
Next is the interim superintendent's report.
Well, I'd first like to start off by saying happy birthday to Mr. Cooper. I got a message that it was his birthday today, so happy birthday. A few things. The school calendar, there is an action item on the board agenda tonight to identify that next-to-last day of school at the elementary as a conference day. And there's been some confusion about if we have any snow days or if April vacation is consumed if we have one snow day. But in fact, we actually have, with that additional elementary day, we have four days we can use if we do have inclement weather before spring break would be impacted. So we'll notify everyone, parents and community, as well as the staff tomorrow about that to clear that up.
Just don't call any snow days.
We had, a couple weeks ago, we had our homecoming and Hall of Fame inductions. I know several people attended those events. And we had four B.C. alumni who were recognized at that event. We also had three seniors who took part in a 24-hour 3D printing challenge at SUNY Poly back in September, 19th through the 20th. They did, they didn't win, but they performed well. And they said that they were inspired to take part in the challenge after one of their teachers, Kim Hopkins, brought a guest speaker into his engineering and design development class. And also, our STEM committee, which we just met yesterday, is actually hosting a 3D printing competition here this year for students in grades 6 through 12. More information to come on that. Judy Kehoe and myself attended the Third Annual School Finance Symposium at the Rockefeller Institute. And Mr. Cooper was there, working. Making school resources matter. The opportunity was really a cross-section of policy and research perspectives on how to best stretch resources. And the theme really centered around what schools can do to improve the quality of educational programs for students, obviously with constraints of limited budget. So it was a great opportunity to hear different perspectives and see what other districts were doing. So thank you for that.
I did grab copies of the materials for the board members, and they're safely sitting on my desk at work.
Oh, great.
I will get them to you.
Okay. We also have some communications award. The New York School Public Relations Association awards were recently announced. And our communication specialist, Joellen Gardner, and Saber Sarnatoro received five awards, two awards of excellence, and three awards of honors. Excellence is the highest award, honors second, and merit is third. And they'll be recognized at the NISBA convention.
Congratulations.
I also wanted to provide some updated information on ENL that we heard about at the last board meeting. There were some concerns about whether or not we were meeting the needs of all of our ENL students. And just to give you a little bit of information, currently, we have 33 ENL students at the elementary, seven at the middle school, and six at the high school. From those, the number that we have, here, 23 of them are getting actually more than required minutes. Eleven are at the required minutes, and nine of them were a little below, all at the elementary due to scheduling issues. So in looking at the schedules, it was clear that we, in fact, are meeting their needs. And last year, we had a 90% success in regards to them, students at the high school, testing out of ESL services based on the assessment they take. At the middle school, we had about 50% of our students test out of ESL based on the assessment that's required. And finally, during the summer, you heard a little bit about the Peace Pole at the high school and No Place for Hate. And one of our former students, Laura Miller, had initiated that idea, and Mr. Domel and some other students here finished that. So I'd like to, Mr. Domel's here, and he has some students. He's going to just share a little bit about the Peace Pole with you. And that's my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Check? All right.
Thank you, guys. Good evening. I'm Dave Domel. I'm a hall principal here at BCHS and DASSA coordinator in the building. Thank you. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share the exceptional work of our students and staff. They continue to amaze me, and I take great delight in sharing some specific accomplishments with you tonight. The Peace Pole and No Place for Hate designation. These initiatives obviously are near and dear to my heart, having a counseling background and also being the DASSA coordinator. Mahatma Gandhi said, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." The students and staff recognized tonight are leading by example and leading the way for change. They have character, compassion, drive, and intellect required to see the big picture. They are always willing to go above and beyond to promote a more positive community. They set the example on a daily basis in our building. The Peace Pole project was initiated by Laura Miller, a 2014 graduate. I encourage you to read Laura's essay. I have a display over here set up. Laura's essay is over there. You will gain an understanding of her passion for the project. With Laura's persistence and the assistance of students and staff, we now have a peace pole located outside the cafeteria of the high school. It serves as a reminder to the students, staff, and the community that we all play an important role in promoting peace on earth. I want to have a special thank you to the following people who played an important role in this. Mr. Scott Landry, Ms. Heather Colman, Mr. Anthony Malizia, Mr. Bob Court in Operations and Maintenance Staff, Mr. Lou Jada, Ms. Melanie Painter, Ms. Lisa Rellyay, Mr. A.G. Irons in the BCHS Student Senate. So I want to thank them specifically. Also, there are four artists that, if you also look over there, there's pavers that are set up. They did a wonderful job. They are going to be placed in, out by the Peace Pole by Bob Court, in the near future here. The students that did, those, I believe, all just graduated, Ryan Fleischer, Matheri Schultz, Carrie Hogan, and Allison Francosa. So I want to thank them specifically. The No Place for Hate is designed to enhance the culture of respect and to create safe, bully-free environment for students in all grade levels. In compliance with New York State Dignity Act, No Place for Hate offers schools the opportunity to be recognized for their staff development, student training related to bullying, harassment, and discrimination. Last year, students and staff participated in activities, group discussion, and training, education, to earn the No Place for Hate designation in our building, which is the banner you see over there. Some specific examples of things that were accomplished last year, not all, but just some snapshots. Students attended the STOP Conference at Siena College, which is Students Together Opposing Prejudice. The administration hosted a DASSA conference in which the majority of the suburban council schools attended. A sample survey was performed to the students to provide insight on the culture of our building. And student-led discussions were held to identify unique labels and issues within our building. Most importantly, we recognized that the students were tired of traditional Character Ed and anti-bullying assemblies. It was clear our students wanted student-centered, student-driven programs. No Place for Hate awards us, affords us, the opportunity to do just that. I would like to recognize the following students who will serve on the committee chairs for the 15-16 school year. Bridgette Reedy, Malik Diamande, Hannah Thean, Lila Johnson, and Caitlin Franck. Also, Ms. McGinnis. Come on over here. Ms. McGinnis has volunteered her time this year. This is an unpaid position, and it's, I have a tremendous amount of respect for her for stepping up. She knew I needed help. And she is going to do a fantastic job this year. And I would just like to have her share a couple of things that she's currently working on, that we're currently working on, and will continue to do throughout the course of the year.
Good evening, everybody. So October brings Anti-Bullying Awareness Month into play. So in our last committee meeting, we've decided that we want to bring awareness to the building as a whole and then, obviously, the community. So the students, as well as Mr. Domel and myself, have come up with activities over the course of the month of October. We started off with just an announcement that Hannah read just the other day. And it kind of brings statistics to mind, just awareness to all of the students and faculty and staff. Next week, we're looking into doing a give confidence out to everybody in the building, which would be nice. And then the following week after that, we're doing Wear Blue to recognize that we stand against bullying. The week after, we plan to do an anti-bullying campaign, and it will end sort of our month. And then from there, we can kind of move forward. We're really excited about it this year because I think we've got a lot more participants involved. The hope with No Place for Hate is that it's not just a club, it's a committee. And it's represented by faculty, staff, community members, and students. So our first committee meeting is in November, and we're looking to have a representative from every club participate, so we then can support everybody in the building. So we look forward to being able to present more events as they come. Thank you.
And anybody that's willing to share anything, has any ideas, we encourage you to either contact Ms. McGinnis or myself. We'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Next is the Board of Education report. I'll begin, besides personal items, we were also met with Dr. Chuck Diedrich from BOSI's dealing with the superintendent's search that will be going on this year. And I do want to just announce one thing that we plan on doing, an online survey, and we mentioned that at a previous meeting. And that should be available around October 16 online. We'll firm that up. And then there were going to be two community dates, two dates for community input from various stakeholders who want to provide input to the board. And those are tentatively scheduled for November 5, which would be at the middle school, subject to availability of the building, and then November 9 here at the high school. So more to come on that. And we'll be finalizing our schedule for the search, too. And I know that we had the, Ms. Monroe had mentioned the homecoming and the inductees. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend that. I had a previous commitment out of town. But I heard positive, very positive feedback on that event, so.
It was very nice. I had a question regarding that, though. The high school has a couple of years behind in putting names up there. I know last year's names of winners aren't up there yet in the hallway at the entrance to the high school.
Yes. We are one of those ones that got pushed back in that we are all the plaques that we have to order. Mrs. Colman as the chair, we're going to wait until, I'm going to throw it on Greg, but we're kind of redoing the front. And so instead of just ordering them and throwing them up, we're going to see what the committee wants to do because there's some ideas about that display because, right now, it literally is plaques on wood on corkboard. So we want to do it right, and that's why the names are not up to date.
Can I just ask, Mr. Landry, while you're at the microphone, could you just give us a kind of synopsis of how homecoming events went, the rally and things like that?
It was perfect. I, and yes, they're all right there. I couldn't believe the pep rally this year. As you know, it's one of my favorite events because it's stress-free and everything is going to go well every time. I say that very sarcastically. You never know what's going to happen. The students were absolutely phenomenal this year. There were a couple changes in terms of the students set the agenda. And I'll tell you, it was the MCs that really did a nice job of, I don't want to say crowd control, but they dictate how those things are going to go. We did not have, I shouldn't say we did not have, they started the freshman suck. I don't know how else to say it, but I will. But it was more tongue-in-cheek because as soon as they started it, they stopped. And then everything, the MCs were yelling about how we all are B.C. and we're all together in this. And so then everybody went. There were no items that were tossed. I know a couple of years ago, there was an egg or two tossed. The rumors every year of various other things being tossed, we did not have that. We didn't have a massive cleanup after. And it was held inside this year. That's what the students wanted. And then the homecoming game itself, Heather Colman did a tremendous job with the Hall of Fame. That was a spectacular event. The weather was great, the football was great, and we had no issues. The other really good thing was that the focus was not just on football. There were events that occurred all day long. And for the first time, I'll say this, for the, I think it's been five or six years, the dance was packed. And it was packed with ninth through 12th graders. And there were no issues, aside from I had three pies thrown in my face, all for a good cause. But it was great. It was, the students were phenomenal.
Anyone else, anything? Yes, Chris?
I wanted to talk about policy. I wanted to request the board look at some potential policy changes. And I wrote up a little summary here that I wanted to go over. But this past December, my daughter Delaney was a ninth grader, and she was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. She underwent a life-altering surgery and missed approximately three months of school. She returned to school after February break, and she came back on a modified schedule due to health issues. And the reason I'm bringing it up tonight is to bring awareness for families in crisis because that's what it was at the time for my family and still sort of is. And how important it is for our district to have a detailed policy plan in place for families in crisis. And I'm not here to criticize anybody, the district or the administration, but rather use it as an opportunity as a board member to ensure that we have the policies and internal procedures in place to make the transition for these families effortless. Areas that I identified during my process with the district and things that I think could be strengthened would be defining what constitutes a family in crisis, creating an emergency plan when a family in crisis is identified. Who is responsible for enacting that emergency plan? The timeframe in which the district has to respond to a family in crisis. Identifying who is responsible for meeting with the student's teachers to obtain a package of required assignments with a timeframe which is reasonable for the student to complete based on their medical condition. The timeframe in which the district has to obtain the required material for the student. I just have a couple more. Bear with me. Ensuring that a qualified and well-prepared tutor is sent to the student's home. If a qualified tutor cannot be located, is the district willing to pay the going rate for tutors in our geographic location? And just meeting their overall need. As a parent and board member, I feel a strong responsibility to make sure our district, one that I really care about, has an emergency plan in place for families in crisis and that the transition for these families going forward is seamless. While this may not be the experience I encountered, I hope that it will be going forward. I encourage the board administration to discuss implementing an emergency plan for families, however that's defined, in either enacting additional policies or revising the ones that we have and are appropriate. I'm currently on the Policy Committee and welcome working with anybody to strengthen those policies and enacting new ones. Thanks.
Thank you, Christine. I'm sure the Policy Committee will look at that issue and see if modifications need to be and where appropriate.
And I didn't cry, so I'm very proud of myself. We're meeting next Wednesday, aren't we? Yes.
Policy Committee, next Wednesday. There's a meeting. Yep. Okay. Good. Thank you. Anyone else, anything?
Just one small thing, since Jody mentioned everything, I was going to say.
Sorry, Lynn.
Since last meeting, the Audit Committee met, and we met with our external auditors. They presented their audit to us, the audit report, which we'll be hearing about momentarily. And the committee was very pleased with the results of the audit. And I'll let them go into it more. But it was a very good meeting.
I attended a NISBA-sponsored board officer training that went very well. It was held up, I think, at the NISBA office. Lynn was there, appreciated the reminders on facilitation and basically group issues. Also, I went to the soccer senior night. It was freezing and windy, but there was a great crowd. And I wanted to thank the students and the fans and the staff for a very enjoyable evening, no inappropriate behavior as far as I could tell, a great night for everybody. And lastly, there was a CASPA-sponsored legislative panel that I know a number of us went to, and I found that very helpful. A number of legislators, Senator Breslin and Assembly, Senator Breslin and Assemblywoman Fahey were there, as well as several other legislative folks answering questions about school financing, finances, and Common Core, et cetera. And I know Diane and Lynn and Matt were there, and I think Jody was there and Kathy. Quite a few number of us were able to attend, so. And I'll end with a request. For any of the board members whose microphones are way away from their mouths, could you just make sure you speak directly into the microphone when you're making a comment? Thank you.
And I would like to add about the CASPA meeting. It was actually a very good meeting. And I'm one of the officers in that group. And we had decided to have the legislative session earlier in the year. We usually have it in February or March. And at that point, they're very busy, and, you know, the budget has been presented in January by the governor, and they're being bombarded with various constituent groups, you know, trying to fight for a piece of the pie of the budget. And we decided to have it earlier this year. And I think it went very well. Every legislator was either there or had a representative there from the whole Capitol District. And they were talking to each other. And I thought it was, you know, and they were talking to us, and they had the time to talk to us, and they weren't rushed out of the room and whatnot. And they're all on the same page, I think truly are on the same page, and were able to speak about the need for additional funding and reevaluation of Common Core and APPPR. But I was very pleased with the session that night. Anyone else, anything else? And we, several of us also will be at the NISBA conference coming up, a week from, a week from Sunday. Right? Yeah. And at that conference, Lynn, who is Vice President of the statewide association, it will be her last year, right? Didn't I say president? What did I say? I'm sorry. President, I'm sorry. Misspoke. She'll be, soon to be, the immediate past president. But we thank Lynn for her service for the past two years on that and look forward to working with her on a continuing basis. Next up is our presentations. First presentation this evening is going to be, as Lynn had previously mentioned, an audit report by Cusack and Company. Jim Cusack and Jason Muir are here, along with Judith Kehoe, to present the report to the board.
Come on down. Jim Cusack and Jason Mara, our auditors, are here, and they have survived another audit, or maybe we have survived another audit. And they're going to talk to you a little bit about that first. And then when they're done, I'll give you a very brief recap of the finances of how did we do.
Thank you. I'm Jim. And we did meet last week with the Audit Committee and went through the audit results in a lot of detail. We met with the Audit Committee in early June to talk about our plan, our approach for auditing your financial statements. You're one of a select number of districts that have the ability to actually prepare your own financial statements. Not all school districts have quality financial accounting personnel in their business office to have the ability to prepare their financial statements. So that's a very good thing. So we did meet and talk in detail, so I'll be a little brief tonight. I wanted to point you to, and I mentioned this to the Audit Committee last week, pages one to 10, that's called Management's Discussion and Analysis. And it's an excellent document. It summarizes the results, the financial results and operating results of your district for the past year, compares it to prior year, and also highlights some issues to consider going forward. So if there's anything to read within this 76-page document, those 10 pages would be the best thing to read. As I mentioned, your district prepares the financial statements, and our responsibility is to audit your financial statements and to make sure there are no material misstatements within the financial statements. So it's a financial audit. We also have compliance aspect audits because you have federal programs, and we're required to do a compliance audit of your federal programs. So I'm happy to report that in all cases, all reports, that would be your basic financial statements under two accounting methods, your extra classroom activity, club accounts, and also your federal programs. We've issued unqualified opinions, unmodified opinions, they're now called. And that's the highest level of assurance we can give you that your financial statements are prepared properly. We had one major accounting change this year that took quite a little bit to work through. AGASB 68 required that you take your, there's a statewide overfunded teachers' retirement system, so it's an asset. And then there's a statewide underfunded employee retirement system liability. So it requires each district now to take their appropriate share of that asset for the overfunded TRS and the liability for the underfunded ERS. What that did was, in effect, added $6.8 million roughly in assets to your district's government-wide financial statements. I mentioned there's two methods. There's governmental fund financial statements, and then a conversion to full accrual or district-wide, government-wide financial statements. And there's reconciliation schedules within your financial statements that show you the differences between the two sets of financial statements. We also audit your controls, internal control systems. We review the systems. We test those systems. So I'm happy to report there were no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses. You ended the year, your accounting, your accounting records are in excellent shape. Your finances are in good shape. You've actually been able to set some funds aside for necessary reserves in the future. So I'd say overall, it was an excellent audit, excellent results. I know some of you were at the Audit Committee meeting, but others weren't. So if anyone had any questions regarding our role and what we do and the audit, I'd be happy to answer them at this point.
Does it look like there's any questions, Jim?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the Audit Committee did ask quite a few questions.
Oh, no.
So how did we do? What was the story that the numbers told us this year? I want to start with our expenditures for the general fund, since that's where the majority of the transactions occur for the district. We ended up coming in at about $89.6 million in total expenditures. That was about $3.4 million below what we had budgeted, which, that's a sign of conservative budgeting. We try to do that every year so that we can have some money left over and not fully exhaust what was in our reserves. But we were very pleased to see that the overall increase from one year to the next was about 1.5%. So that's a very nominal change in our spending patterns. So that's a very nominal change in our spending patterns. On the instructional side, that $790,000 is made up of the types of things that you would expect to see in that increase. Those are the contractual salary increases, there were some equipment money spent, and additionally, we had the first phase of the Aspen Student Information System included in that increase as well. Our pupil transportation costs saw a decrease of about $157,000 and that was largely driven by fuel used, using less than we had expected and at a lower cost than we had expected. So we drive a lot of miles, so when we get a positive change in those rates, that yields a nice savings. Our employee benefits were up 1.76%. So any year to have a single-digit increase in the employee benefits line, which as of years gone by, those have often been double-digit increases, so that is also good news for us. I have one slide following this that'll break that down into a little bit more detail for you. Our transfers out were a little bit higher this year than in prior years, but those were all for board-approved transfers. For instance, we did transfer an additional amount for the food service program. At the last meeting in June, that had been approved. We had a write-off on some of our state aid that flows into the extended school year program and that is accounted for in a separate fund, so that write-off ended up coming back. That was about $125,000 of that increase in the transfers out. And then that $254,000 on the bottom also includes the emergency repair work that was done on the middle school ramp where that was being repaired. So all in all, not a significant increase in expenditures and would love to continue that low-growth trend. For our fringe...
Last question. Was the instructional, and I know you said it was salaries, but we also hired more people last year, right? Were you able to call back some people?
Um...
This year.
You're thinking this year's budget. So this we're talking is 14, 15?
About the same.
Yeah. So that'll be next year's numbers. You're foreshadowing the following year's presentation.
I thought we put some stuff back in last year.
Yeah. So. On our fringe benefits, our health insurance increase was only up 1.57%, which is phenomenal. If you recall, during the budget process, we had talked about the reason why we had come in with a lower rate of growth on that and part of that was driven by a higher participation in the Health and Lou benefit. So where we had employees who could get coverage elsewhere, we incentivized them to do that and that really helped contain the growth in our health insurance costs. Oops. Our TRS and ERS, you'll note that we had an increase in the TRS and that was because the rates had increased in addition to the salary increases. It was just the opposite for our ERS and we actually had a slight decrease of about 1% in the rates. And what we're finding with the ERS is we are finally starting to see the results of tiers five and six in the pension system. We have close to $1 million worth of payroll that are now in those higher tiers and they have a lower premium associated with them, so that's really helping to drive down that cost. So I also listed the coming year's budgeted amounts there, just so that you can see, if we come in according to budget, we're looking at a 0.3% increase potentially in those fringe benefits. And a large piece of that is also driven by the rates that are dropping in TRS and ERS. It's close to half of our overall expenditures in those two line items, so when we have reductions in rates, it really yields tremendous benefits to our program. On the revenue side, the increase in our school taxes was largely a function of the 2.99% levy increase. That seems like old news now because indeed, that was in the fall of 2014. Our STAR aid generally tends to go up about 2% every year because that's the increase that is allowed for within the program itself at the state level. And we also had a bump up in our pilot revenues and that was from another offshoot of the revale effort that the town had gone through where one of the projects had a fairly sizable increase in their assessed value of close to $5 million, which bumped up that line for us. The decrease of close to $395,000 under the sales of property and equipment is really more of a reflection of a one-time event. If you recall, back in our 1314 school year, we sold 90 atoms. So $400,000, close to the full amount of that decrease, is just because of that one-time sale of the old Ed Center. Our state and federal aid, we were expecting an increase in that. That $938,000 includes restoration of the GEA that we experienced in last budget year of close to $511,000. And then the balance of that increase was from our expense-driven aids came in above budget when we settled up with the state for that year. Under the miscellaneous, that increase of $374,000 is also somewhat of a non-recurring event. When we sold our bond anticipation notes on the capital project this past year, we were offered a premium on the rate and that premium of a close to $160,000 gets reported as miscellaneous income. So that's a large reason for why that miscellaneous line item had increased. And the rest of it relates to the annual settlements that we get through our OCM BOSI's participation in that consortium for energy savings. So we were pretty much close to spot-on with the budget. We were only about $477,000 above that, but with those two items combined, we ended up with a surplus of about $2.2 million in the general fund. And that surplus ended up rolling into our fund balance or our net assets. As we had talked about towards the end of last year, when we were reviewing the setting of the tax rates and the creation of reserves or the amounts within the reserves, that surplus allowed us to put about $1.6 million into the newly authorized capital reserve, which can benefit us as we build the next phase of capital projects in the coming years. So, and we're still within our below 4% requirement for the undesignedated fund balance. So that's again, one of the key indicators that we end up reporting to the state. So in a nutshell, that's your recap of where we spent the money, what the changes were from and where the money came in from over the past year. And if you have any questions?
Lynn?
Judy, with the piece of property that you said had gone up in $5 million of their assessment?
Yes.
Is there any movement for a surchargeary claim to have that reduced?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
Okay.
So, you know, those are generally supported by market values. They don't just grab any number. They're doing it based on comparable sales, so I'm not aware of any surchargeary and that might cause us to conclude that it was a reasonable value. But the pilots are typically pegged to those assessed values and whatever our tax rates are, so when that assessed value goes up, we see a higher revenue stream from that.
Thank you.
Yeah? Sherman? Yeah? No one else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next presentation will be an academics update by Mr. David Hurst, our interim Assistant Superintendent.
So again, it's that time of year where we present the academic update and I'd like to recognize and thank the principals and supervisors who are being here tonight. Not only are they here to support the presentation and help answer any questions that you may have, but they also provided a great support to me in putting the presentation together. And as you can imagine, it was, it's a pretty large task and I certainly couldn't have done this without their help and support, so I thank them for that. So just to recap sort of our overall results, once again, BCSD has made AYP on all of its exams and among all subgroups and therefore, we've been designated as a district in good standing. And because we've achieved these types of results for numerous years now, we've actually, six of our schools have been identified by State Ed as a reward school. And just to give you sort of the magnitude of that, there's only 365 schools in the entire state that are recognized with this honor and to have six of our schools recognized is quite an achievement. All five of our elementary buildings and our middle school were recognized as high performing and Hammergrill actually was high performing and high progress, which they have similar criteria, but the high progress has to do a little bit more with growing from prior results. The three main criteria for these categories are, the school has to maintain AYP for two consecutive years, they have to successfully close gaps in their subgroups. So for instance, our students with disabilities subgroup typically performs at a lower level than all students, so there's a gap between those two. And if you were to close that gap from year A to year B, that is one of the criteria. And then the third criteria is actually how your proficiency rate compares with schools with the rest of the state. You have to be in the top 20% of the state to qualify. So all six of our schools there met those criteria. So just to sort of give you an update on where we are in terms of the testing and curriculum, we're moving right along. This is really our fourth year dealing with the Common Core state standards. As you recall, we actually started with our kindergarten, first and second graders a year prior to the state mandate. But in 2012, 13, that was the big rollout statewide and that spring was the first exposure to the assessments aligned to the Common Core standards. And Bethlehem, just like all of the schools in the state, saw a dramatic decrease in proficiency rates. We dropped 22% in ELA and 32% in math, which was pretty consistent with the rest of the state. The following year, they implemented Algebra I Common Core Regents and a curriculum for the Common Core ELA. But because that's a sort of a three-year program, we won't see the impact of that until this year, which is the first year our students will actually be taking the exam. Last year, we saw the implementation of geometry and this year, we will see the implementation of Algebra II and the administration of the English exam and that will basically complete the three-year phase-in of the Common Core program at the high school level. So if we take a look at our proficiency rates and it's, the state breaks things up into levels, levels one through four, where three and four are what they would consider proficient. You can see that we're, you know, in the ELA, we're, you know, roughly 55-ish percent on average with our proficiency rates. Math, a little bit higher, closer to 60% with a seemingly dramatic dip in eighth grade. But remember, if you look at the size of that cohort, only 162 students actually took that exam and that's because our accelerated students, we do not double test, so there's a large number of students that actually do not take that exam and that's indicated in the line below. If we were though, to adjust, just to be fair, all of our students that take the Algebra Regents or the Geometry Regents in middle school, they all achieve proficiency. In fact, most of them achieve mastery level. If we were to assume that they would do the same thing on the state testing level, we would see that those numbers do jump in line with, you know, the rest of the three through eight testing for math. The seventh grade number would jump to 63% and the eighth grade number would jump to 57% if we were to include those groups back into the testing program.
Can I ask? Do you want me to wait or can I ask?
Go ahead.
With the math Common Core for eighth grade students, it explains the large number of students taking obviously advanced math and taking the Common Core exams, so they're not in that number. What was the difference between 2014 and 2015?
They also, they also did not take in 2014.
No, no, I just meant for the Common Core exam. Is that later on in the presentation?
The Regents exams are later. Yes.
Okay.
This is strictly three through eight.
Okay.
We will get to the Regents exams during the high school portion. So taking a look at participation, there was a lot of talk last year about opt-outs. It certainly got a lot of talk in the press and you can see that, you know, we saw a substantial number of our students opting out and this obviously has an impact on our numbers. On average, about 20% of our students opt out of the ELA program. And within those opt-outs, they weren't really from any one particular category. It actually broke out perfectly. Half of our opt-outs had scored proficient the prior year and the other half scored not proficient. So it's not like it would have skewed our numbers in terms of overall proficiency, but it did just obviously drop the number of students taking the exam. We saw a much more dramatic impact on the math exams. I think given that they're, given a week later, momentum started to build for the opt-out movement and those numbers did increase, especially at the five through eight level. As just discussed, you can see that our seventh and eighth grade, not only did we have the opt-out number to deal with, but we also have the Regents exam number. So when we take a look at the number of, or the percent of students that actually took that eighth grade exam, only 41% of our eligible students took it. So to try to read too much into the proficiency rate at that with such a large number of students not taking the exam, I think is very, very difficult to do. But I think by adding the Regents exams into it does give a much clearer picture. Yes, Lynn?
Will we be informing parents on, I know we have a new education commissioner and she's been listening to all groups around the state, including parents and teachers and, you know, you can't change things overnight. I mean, the testing company has been eliminated, but they still have to use tests this year. But, you know, they're looking at shortening the tests, the three through eight, English, ELA and the math. They said that they can do that, so they'll be, you know, taking items out. Do you think that'll help, help with maybe not as many students opting out?
I mean, I hate to speculate on that, but the, in talking with parents and other school districts, there is, you know, most people feel the opt-out number is actually going to increase this year, not decrease. They feel that their message was not made clear enough last year, so those that did opt out last year, many that I've spoken with said they're going to do so again and they're going to encourage more to do so because they feel that their message was loud, but wasn't loud enough. So although the tests themselves may shorten up this year, I think it's really going to come down to the lobbying effort on the part of the folks that support the opt-out movement, how far they're willing to push that agenda.
We've already received opt-out requests, which we did not receive this early last year. And I think unfortunately, if those assessments are still tied to teacher evaluation, that movement is still going to continue.
Can we get the breakout of the numbers for the eighth grade Algebra I and Geometry Common Core? Would it not be included in the results for Math VIII? I know you combined it with the scores for just the general Math VIII exam, but...
I'm not sure. So you want to know how the seventh, eighth grade is performed?
How, the average, I guess the average?
When we get to the high school, I can talk to that.
You have the eighth grade included in that?
I know it, but when we get there, I can break it down a little bit further. So how do we compare it to the rest of the state? We're, you know, on average, we're 25 to 30% higher than state performance on all of the grade levels for ELA. And, you know, what does that really mean? Because you say, you know, it's a large state, we have over 700 schools taking it. Yes, we're much higher than the state average, but where does that really put us? And in terms of ELA, there's really two measures you can use to sort of compare schools. One is the scale score, which is sort of, if you think in terms of like SATs are scored on a scale from zero to 800, most of us are sort of familiar with that. The state test scores typically range from 100 to 400-ish. They change the numbers every year, which makes it very, very difficult to compare from year to year, but in one given year, you can certainly compare. So if we were to compare our mean scale score or even our proficiency level, which are the numbers of threes and fours, on average, we're about the 91st percentile statewide. So there's only about 9% of the schools out of those entire 700 that are outperforming us in ELA regardless of whether you look at mean scale score or percent proficient. In math, comparing, again, first I'll do it with the Regents students not included. You can see, we're still outperforming by about 25 to 30% on average. If we do include, so this first graphic does not include the Algebra exams. If we do include the Algebra exams, then you can see that it does fall in line with, you know, the other numbers. Obviously, the state number for eighth grade is also on the low end because many other schools also do not have their students double test, but there are quite a few schools that do. And the main two reasons I've heard on that, one reason schools, they don't really consider double testing because these tests occur in May, the Regents exams are in June, so they figure there's enough time in between that you're not really putting a huge burden on the students. And the other rationale is they don't want to see low numbers on that. And the other rationale is they don't want to see low numbers on that report. So in terms of percentile, the average, we're in about the 88th percentile for math. Again, if you sort of don't include that eighth grade, because that's a very, very difficult grade level to compare. So you can see that our performance in math comparatively to the rest of the state is slightly lower than that for ELA. But when you, if you go back and look at our proficiency rates, our proficiency rates for math are actually higher than our proficiency rates for ELA. So that sort of signals that the ELA tests in general are more difficult exams comparatively than the math exams. Because we're scoring at a higher level proficiency-wise on the math exams, but our ranking in the state is not as high as on the ELA exams, if that makes sense. So that is sort of illustrated in this graphic. We actually saw quite a decrease in our ELA scores from 2014 to 2015. And again, I caution you on this because it's really difficult to compare from year to year because the state adjusts the cut points every single year. All right, the last four years they've given these tests, they've moved the cut line every single year. So what was proficient last year isn't necessarily proficient this year. So to try to compare those numbers when you're moving the line, it's not really all that meaningful. That's why I think the comparison within the state, where do we rank, is much more useful than just seeing what happens from year to year when there's a constant moving line in terms of cut scores. As you can see, the math, we actually went up in every single one. But again, statewide, our performance was better on the ELA ranking-wise than it was on the math.
What's the range of the cut, the movement in the cut scores? About how, do you have a sense of how much that...
Well, it's tricky because, so let me explain to you how the scores first arrived. So say there's 55 raw points on a test, like all the multiple choice are worth one point each, some of the free response are two, some are three, some are four. There's a total of 55 points. They then take those scores and they sort of assign them a number between 100 and 450, say. But it could turn out that, say, a score of 30 gets assigned to 300, a score of 31 gets assigned a score of 320. There's a 20-point gap there. So you, when you look at, you know, like an average number, you say, well, we have a long way to go to get from 300 to 320, but there's no, you can't get any of those numbers in between. You can only get a 31 or a 32, which then translates to this huge gap. So the cut score one year might be 300 and the next year it might be 320. So it appears to be, say, a 20-point difference. It's really not. It's one raw point difference. So the difference in getting one multiple choice right or wrong from year to year could be the difference in you being a Level 2 or a Level 3. And again, only the on-grade level students were included there. So if we were to take a look at sort of our largest subgroup, which would be that students with disabilities, you can see obviously the proficiency levels are quite lower than they are for our general students. But again, the reason we're rewarding schools is because the gap between these numbers and the overall numbers, we're continuing to close. And as, at first glance, these numbers may seem low, but in comparing these to schools like Pittsfield, Brighton, Byram Hills, Williamsville North, schools that are typically, Scarsdale, typically referred to as the top schools with us in the state, our numbers are as equal, if not better than some of those numbers.
I have a question.
Yes.
When we do the students with disabilities, are the students that are out of district placement?
They're included in these numbers.
They're included in this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Which we don't have an over, you know, we don't have a huge number of students that are out of district place, so it wouldn't skew these numbers one way or the other too too much. So here's just a quick graphic showing how our students compare with the state. It's really just a summary of the data that was provided on previous slides to show sort of where we were in 14-15, where the state was 14-15. Obviously, there's a sizable gap between us and the state. You can see again, in ELA, our proficiency rate went down, our math rate went up. And the same exact phenomenon happened with students with disabilities. It was very consistent. So the students with disabilities performed using the same characteristics as the students in the general population.
And these scores were achieved even with accommodation?
Yes, and by accommodations, we have, you know, there's numerous accommodations students receive. Some receive extended time, some receive separate location, some have the test read to them, some are able to use a scribe, you know, some have directions clarified for them. There are, it's actually a five-page document that the state provides that are allowable accommodations for testing settings. And then it even breaks it down into specific accommodations that are or not allowed for the ELA versus the math because of what's being tested. So for instance, if a student's allowed in general a calculator on the state assessment, they would not be because it's specifically testing computation, things of that nature.
Those are reviewed each year.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Those are reviewed each year.
For every student?
Right. Okay, so now outside the three through eight math realm, which tends to kind of get the bulk of the attention, there is a science test, grades four and eight. If you recall years ago, there'd also be a social studies test, grades five and eight with the state, because of budgetary reasons, cut that exam. But our proficiency level on the science exam continues to be very high. 94% for both the fourth and eighth grade levels, and we're consistently in the 94% to 96% range on those exams. So for Regents, I've sort of broken it down into disciplines, if you will. The first slide represents sort of our humanities courses, English and our two history exams. You can see that we have very, very high passing rates and mastery rates on all three of those exams. For our science exams, as you can see, for the first two, our passing and mastery rates are both very, very high. For our chemistry and physics exams, they do drop a little, and people typically tend to question this, but I do caution you, there's sort of two things at play here. One, those are, you know, those are two far, much more difficult in terms of content. But second, the way the state scales things, the scales on the chemistry and physics exams are much more aggressive than the scales on the earth science and the living environment exam. So just to point out an example, the state, similar to the way they do the three through eight testing, they assign grades between zero and 100, but they're not really percentages. So in other words, on the chemistry exam, in order to get an 85 on their scale, you actually have to answer 88% of the points correctly. So to get on the high-end scale for chemistry and physics is actually sort of much more challenging than it is on the earth science and living environment exams because of the way the scales are set. The same thing happens with the math exams. The new Common Core exams, the way they're doing the cut scores, they've really changed how to achieve mastery. So for example, on the Algebra exam, you actually have to get 87% of the points to score an 85, which is, so you'll see there's a decrease in our Algebra mastery numbers. I will caution you that the integrated Algebra numbers look very, very low. Traditionally, our integrated Algebra results were 95% passing, you know, 60% mastery. These numbers only represent, only 37 students took that exam. It was our last cohort of students that were eligible to take that exam. They were students in our two-year stretch program. So obviously, there's our students that really struggle with math. So it's expected if you're only looking at that group of students, the results are not going to compare very well with when our entire population took that exam. We did have 370 students take the Regents in Algebra I, with 86% passing and 16% mastery, which the mastery number and the passing number, again, much lower than we're used to seeing with the old integrated Algebra. But in comparing with the rest of the suburban council, we're actually in the top three schools with those results. It's a much, much more challenging exam now. We have seen two, this is the second year now of that test. On average, the scores are 10 points lower than they were when we gave the integrated Algebra exam. So back, Christine, to your point, traditionally, the average at the middle school on the integrated Algebra exam was about a 90% for accelerated students. And for the Common Core Algebra I exam, it's about 80%.
I guess my biggest concern when I look at these numbers is I get concerned when the kids are applying to college outside of New York State and we're hitting them twice. We're hitting on them with a Regents score on their transcript and we're hitting them with 20% of their grade, including the tests that we're not quite proficient in getting above an 85. The 16% is extremely low for our district. We're used to higher numbers with the Regents exam. And I guess I just want to get a little rationale behind, why is that still our practice? Because I think it's going to hurt the current group of 10th, 11th, and 12th graders until we get this system down and we really understand Common Core a little more.
Two things. First, we're not the only school struggling with that.
No, I know.
I know. So it's been a very hot topic in our, especially our suburban council supervisors' meetings. And actually, today, we had a supervisors' meeting here and this was one of the items on our agenda, was how are we going to address the impact that these exams are now having on students' transcripts? So we met about it in supervisors' meeting today. People are going to collect data from other schools to see what they're doing. We're going to talk with our departments and we're going to revisit it again next month at our supervisors' meeting. And we hope to have a recommendation very soon as to how we're going to proceed going forward with using Regents exams in students' final exam averages.
Because I'm glad to hear that you're looking at it, because now we have also the English exam rolling out for the 11th graders this year and it's, it's very concerning.
We have social studies coming and, social studies coming and science coming in the next few years also.
And New York State, I know they have a lot of different things, but they don't recommend including it, and I know all the suburban council districts do. It's a bone of contention between the two organizations, but I'm glad that you're having the discussion.
So hopefully, not next month, the following month, after we've had a chance to revisit it in supervisors' meeting, I can report back to where we are with that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Is the Regents a separate score though, or a separate item on a transcript?
Yes, so you have to, the law requires you to report the score on the transcript. You're not required to include it as part of the average. So the reason geometry is up there twice is similar to last year's Algebra. Students were allowed to take both the new Common Core Geometry exam and the old Geometry exam. And again, it's hard to put too much stock in the Common Core numbers because students knew they had this safety net to fall back on. They had 10 years' worth of history to study for the old exam. They had zero years of history to study for the new exam. So I would imagine most students put most of their efforts into studying for an exam they could accurately target. That being said though, our results, average-wise, we did not see a 10-point drop like we did with the Algebra. It was only about a five-point drop. And knowing that the exam was given a month earlier almost, because they gave it the first week of June, it gave teachers, you know, almost three full weeks less time to prepare for the course. We think going forward, that exam's going to actually provide much less of a challenge in terms of meeting our old benchmarks for averages than the Algebra I does. Okay, so for AP results, we continue to excel in offering AP courses. You know, we're right about the 90% mark in terms of students scoring three or higher, which the college board deems proficient, which many colleges will then grant placement and credit for those courses. You know, it's a good 25, again, points above the state average. And, you know, worldwide, it's almost 40, or 30% above that. So we actually had 462 students take AP exams and we wrote 872 exams. So obviously, many students are doubling up on exams. And this number has actually, this number has grown 30% in the last five years. So since 2010, we've had 30% more exams written in AP than, you know, going forward. And you would think that that might cause our numbers to dip a little bit because we do have an open enrollment policy here where students, if they want to take an AP course, they can. Whereas some other schools are very, very stringent upon, if you don't meet certain prerequisites, you absolutely cannot take the course. We have an open enrollment here and even with that, we continue to maintain very, very high standards. You can see that our average on most of the exams, you know, hovers between 3.8 and 4. And statewide and worldwide, those averages usually hover between 2.8 and 3. So we're a solid point ahead of both state and global averages on these exams. Remember that 3.0 is essentially proficient. So, you know, listed there are the arts, the English, and the history and social science exams. Next, we have our math, science, and world language exams. And I think it's sort of, you can see there that there appears to be sort of a dip in Physics I, Physics II. That's a brand-new exam last year. It used to be a single exam. It's now broken into two exams. And it was far, far different than the way the course had been structured before. And we're well aware that these results are not up to our standards and we're working on, you know, closing that gap and getting things back to where they traditionally were. And the final piece are the diploma types and graduation rate. We had 369 graduates walk across the stage last June, which our best guess in terms of a graduation rate is 95%. These numbers are sort of tricky to figure out. We don't have a solid number from the state itself yet. This is sort of our best guess because the state has both four-year and five-year graduation rates and there's a lot that goes into figuring out cohorts, who really belongs in the graduation cohort. So this is our sort of most conservative estimate, 95%. But, you know, you can see that about a third of our students receive Advanced Regents diplomas, about another third receive Advanced Regents with honors, which means basically that they achieve mastery on all of the required Regents exams. So 85 or better on six Regents exams. And then about a third achieve just a Regents diploma, which is just the Core Six exams without going above and beyond those. So some things we're looking to do this year, some of these are continuations, some of these are sort of new initiatives. Obviously, we're going to continue to support the implementation of the Common Core learning standards for both ELA and math. We're going to conduct data analysis of the state data. And again, this is, this is becoming increasingly frustrating because the amount of data they give us is not as useful as we'd like it to be. It's very difficult to compare from year one to year two because of the moving cut scores. They only release half the test, but we're trying to use that data as best we can. Certainly provide support to students that are struggling. We're looking to continue to refine our local assessments so that they're rigorous enough that the students are able to meet these standards. Support collaborative planning and goal setting. Continue to explore ways technology can be used. Expand the computer science program. I think one of the things I'd like to highlight is, you know, this year, we're running a computer science program through Siena College for the first time. We had 48 students sign up for that class. We only had room for 24 because it's a grant-funded program, but we're hoping next year to be able to expand the number of sections in that course and be able to offer it to all 48 students if that many choose to enroll again. And then to continue to explore the IB program, I know Mr. Landry has a presentation coming up at a future board meeting and he'll be able to speak more to that. So I know we had questions along the way, but if you have any final questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I do have a question, and Mrs. Johnson might be able to help. So I'm struggling with the, even with accommodation, students, and I'm sure it's a very complex issue and area. So even with accommodation, we have 75% of students with disabilities scoring at Level 1 for math and 50% of them scoring Level 1, 50% at Level 1 on ELA. So can you just give maybe a more of a sense of what we, else we could do for those students? Or is that kind of the expectation? I mean, so like I said, it's one thing if students were not receiving accommodations. So just if you could fill us in a bit more about why those scores fall at that level? Again, realizing it's a very complex situation.
So for our students, I mean, they are, you know, it's, it's a huge picture because we're talking about students with a variety of disabilities. We have students with significant learning disabilities. We have students with significant behavioral issues. The accommodations, as Dave mentioned, is five pages long because, you know, if you're a student with significant learning issues, you might need help with somebody assisting with the test being read to you. And then there's extra time that goes into it because they have to process all of the information that's, that's coming in their direction. We don't expect that those students are going to get the same scores as all of the other students. What we want is for them to have as much support as possible. And the support is, it's not just the accommodation during the test. It's the programs and the services we're offering them throughout the year. It's a lot of assistive technology and supports that we're giving them again throughout the year and some things that they might use during the assessment. As Dave mentioned, this isn't something unique to Bethlehem. Students across the state with all of these supports, we are hoping are going to do the very best that they can.
And some of the accommodations that are allowed during traditional and And some of the accommodations that are allowed during traditional instruction and assessments in the class are not allowed on the state assessment. So if a student typically has something read to them, and it's a reading component of the ELA, it's not allowed to be read to them. So that makes a huge difference. The other piece, which, for especially ELA, if you're thinking a student who's in fifth grade, they are required to take that fifth-grade test, so they're at fifth-grade reading level passages, or sometimes higher. Those students may be reading at a second-grade level. So, you know, you're putting things in front of them that they can't even decode, much less be able to read entire passages. And the state has tried for several years, and I guess are continuing to try to get relief on that from the federal government, so that students could take a more age-appropriate assessment, but that has to be approved by the federal government, and that has not been permitted to this point.
Charmaine, also, just to get a sense, for some of our students here at the high school that are gonna take a Regents exam, by the time you put all of the accommodations together, we have students that are spending up to eight hours taking one exam. It takes a significant amount of patience and concentration. I mean, it's, it's really a grueling time for some of them.
Great. Well, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just a quick one, kind of related to special ed and also to regular students. I think, are they looking at, you know, making the test a little more age-appropriate, both for special ed and for regular ed students?
I think that'll probably, I think that'll probably be done through their review, I would hope it's done through their review process. I mean, they have addressed the length of the assessments, at least trying to reduce it a little bit this year. So hopefully, moving forward, that will be done. But I still think, you know, having a student who's, let's say, a fifth grader, who's reading at a much lower level, regardless if they make the test or not, they're still going to have a hard time reading that.
Just as an example, one of the reading selections on the third-grade ELA this year had a sixth-to-eighth-grade
Flexile.
reading level. And the questions were so ambiguously phrased that even the author of the selection didn't know what the answer was to a couple of the questions.
Is this the last, are they doing local diplomas this year, or is that phased out now?
That's still in, for special ed students.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Dave, Kathy. Our next presentation is a construction update by Mr. Greg Nolte, Director of Facilities and Operations.
Good evening, tonight. I stand before you, giving my last construction update. Why? Well, basically, we're done. We are, yes. Successfully done. We are within budget and on time. We're just about done. We're finishing up some things, but we're very close. I know many of you are saddened by this last presentation. And the riveting updates, Jody, I know you especially, but we basically saved the best for last. We have a great presentation with lots of really, really neat pictures. And I'm just gonna highlight, basically, from the last presentation that we did, I think, summertime or so. But this is in everything that we've done on this project. The stadium got all-new lights. We have football on it this fall. Haven't heard of many issues on it. Now, we actually used a drone to take, because we had so much site work. We actually used a drone for many of these pictures, just to give you a magnitude of what has happened at the high school. This, of course, is a stadium field. Fortunately, the eagle wasn't done. This was just before homecoming. But, basically, we had all-new turf, a new track, and lighting on this field. You got a good view of the new tennis courts, transportation. This is the JV softball field. If the board recalls, you approved a change order, so we could put sod down, which will advance the schedule of using it. I think we've already mowed it four times. So we're pretty confident that this will be usable for spring of 2016. Backstops are new. And this is what we called Area C. This is right next to the fence field. This was a very large area. This is where practice football typically goes. A lot of the PE practices are here as well. You see the fence field on the right-hand side. Just another view.
Greg, back to the fields where you see all the dirt right now. Will that be seeded over come?
Yes, actually, it already has been seeded once. They still have to, and I'm sorry, this is Scott Boris. As you know, from Campus Construction, our construction manager, he's gonna be the last one standing. Two of his staff have already left for another job, and he's been watching the job. So he's another two, three, four weeks, five weeks, something like that with us.
It was seeded, hydroseeded, it was brilliant seeded, and then hydroseeded both. Well, with that rain we had, we lost a lot of the seeds, so they'll be re-hydroseeding it this week and hopefully finishing up next week for sure.
There's still this top dressing. They usually put like a hay down just to give some stabilization, and you can see where there already has been. We do have some growth, but not as quick. We're yelling at the contractor to get done, because it's actually a very good growing season at this point. It's our goal that, basically, we should have all fields back up and running by a year from now, basically, fall of 2016. Another view. This is, we threw this in there. This isn't the bond project, but this is our capital outlay, our Phase Two project. We did lots of signage in there, a lot of school colors. We did a lot of soffit reconstruction. We're basically kind of working the top-down. And this has changed dramatically from what it used to be. The windows, the window wall is kind of like a translucent panel now that helps with glare, or reduce glare, for the swimmers and actually the patrons watching. Typical classroom. We did a lot of asbestos abatement here at the high school. I think we did close to seventeen rooms or so, where we abated the asbestos floor tiles and put down a vinyl composite tile. Three of the stairwells in D-Wing had some of the terrazzo that was deteriorating. This picture, you don't see it very well, but they were replaced with terrazzo stair treads, pretty much the treads that don't have the little yellow dashes on them.
The color match is almost perfect. It's hard to tell.
Some stuff you may not see is some very large and involved duckwork on the roof above the entrance lobby that provides ventilation to A-Gym and the auditorium. This was very involved. Some stuff you don't see on top of the roof is a chimney that the masonry work was extremely deteriorated. The capstone was all replaced. Middle school, we had a big theme of redoing kitchens this summer. Middle school had extensive renovations, and I know the staff is still getting used to all the new equipment there. I wish this chimney at the middle school was much lower, that you could actually see it, because this is just, just brilliant. This is quite high up in the air, and basically, all of that upper area was, that's actually replaced, was it limestone?
It was all replaced limestone. It was made to match your existing profiles you had before. They took the samples down, actually cast molds of it to make new, to put it back, so it would be original and all tightened with stainless steel anchors.
When Sandy Morley left, we, we had some deterioration in some, some part of this front facade that kind of was falling down. So we put this black shroud over it. It was a structural covering, and people felt that, you know, the middle school was mooring, because she left. But it was more just to protect everybody underneath. We actually descaled the whole front under an emergency measure. And basically, with this past bond, the corners, everything has been pretty much replaced. You see kind of like an orange glow. That actually is copper flashing. That was recently redone. The board approved, not that long ago, somewhat of a very large change order, this was part of the initial project, to give us a better means of egress out of the basement. And this work is fast approaching its completion. I think it looks great. We should be done, I would imagine, and we're hoping in the next three, four weeks. The storefront and the glass, that metal frame that you see actually gets all glass there, and that is something that is a very long lead item, that we're hoping comes in a little bit early in time, so we can get this opened up for the big Halloween pit party.
Did you say that was gonna have glass on it? Is it a special kind of glass, or is it?
Storefront-type glass. We designed it in such a way to somewhat match the gym windows there, if you see with the arches. And as well, the stonework, as you see, that is actually a formed stonework to try to match the existing stonework from the original 1932 building. Stop by, it looks really cool. This is our emergency ramp project, which is
A lot farther along since we gave you this PowerPoint. But the stone is now on the side, handrails out back. They're gonna pour the sidewalk tomorrow. And everything will be done except for plenty of grass seed in the back and the coping stone that goes on top of the wall, but it will be usable early next week. Just to put the coping stone around, people using it after that.
The front entrance has been open all during this time. It's been somewhat of an inconvenience, but they've been tolerating us. Elsmere, the new kitchen, the serving line, we actually bumped out into the cafeteria slightly. This is their new code-compliant, health-compliant cooking area. New freezer. Elsmere, each of the wings, the bathrooms, were renovated to code ADA-compliant bathrooms. That is in each classroom. The classrooms as well had the VAT, or I'm sorry, the asbestos tile removed and replaced with vinyl tile. Hamagrel received a new kitchen as well. They received a new entrance. It was very spalled and deteriorated, so the contractor poured a whole new, this is underneath the canopy at the front entrance. Glenmont, we just didn't sand the floor, but we replaced the whole floor. The condition of the floor warranted that the whole thing be ripped up. The gym was actually built in, in two different phases. And the newer part of the gym was actually recessed down about an inch and a half, which we didn't, we weren't aware of. So we had to scurry to level the floor, so we had one nice, big, beautiful new gym. Lot of masonry work at Slingerlands, which was a theme. Transportation, this was another alternate that was accepted. This is the back area. That was all stone in the last bond, but we ended up paving that whole back area, which has helped tremendously with the bus wash and the muck that comes off the buses that is collected in that area. This was a very involved repaving of the entrance, where you have the bus garage on the left and the employee lot on the right. Transportation is always fixing buses, even through the summertime, so it was a lot of coordination with the director there to shut down certain bays, so we could pour that concrete apron that you see on the left-hand side, and have them still maintain all of the buses that they have to do. And that, that actually went very well. In fact, we had this done before summer actually hit. And this is the most important job on the entire bond. This is a new equipment storage shed at O&M in the back. Okay, so how did we do? We had about a million-two contingency, which represented about five percent of the overall hard cost construction. And this has been a slide that we've presented every, every update. So we are right now down to about forty-five thousand dollars, and that is including the change orders that you are gonna be acting on tonight. Okay? And that's about it. We have a couple more change orders that we're possibly going to review. Roofing and then possibly some more bleachers, but that'll be for another meeting. But basically, the, we used most of the construction allowance, and any allowance that we did not use was basically put back into the project. But we are, for twenty million dollars, and we're having about forty-five thousand left, we did pretty good. So, any questions?
Yeah, Lynn?
Have the cameras been installed?
Yes, cameras have been installed. High school interior and exterior, middle school interior and exterior, transportation and at O&M, and they are operational.
I have a question about the main competition field, the main football field. I saw some gym classes using it, and I wasn't sure how, is there a rotation scheduled to maintain that field? Or can you just use it like any other field, and it's not gonna wear out, or?
Well, right now, we have only about fifty percent of our fields, based upon all the construction that you saw. That's all off-limits. We're not using any of that. So, we've had lots of discussions between the athletic director, the phys ed supervisor, and myself, as far as how do we accommodate athletics and phys ed classes? So, we've met a couple times. Next year's gonna be a lot better when we can have phys ed on their own fields and not on game fields. So yes, they are out on the stadium field sometimes. They're out on what now is our field hockey fields, which is the outfield of baseball. They're on the fence field at times. We've looked at what they're doing. They're not really, they're playing, I think, frisbee and some other things, so they're not really digging it up. And so, and we're keeping them off if we have had some substantial rain and stuff like that. But we are, we are accommodating. You know, we're trying to work with them, but, you know, we have to have classes.
Okay. But it's not gonna damage the investment that the district put into the facility?
No.
I had a question about the track, because I know this came up in a previous facilities committee, meaning that we, I'm a member of the facilities committee. Is this Mike and, who else is on the committee? Joanne, maybe? Joanne. In terms of protecting the lanes of the track, so that, for example, the innermost lane doesn't get worn out, because everyone uses that, are you employing a strategy to rotate which lanes are used for like the recreational walkers? I think that was discussed before.
Yeah, we, we haven't done this yet, but we have to do some, we have to put up some signage, okay? Number of times, we, we've found bikes out there. A number of years ago, I had somebody snow blow the track. But yes, part of this is getting some signage up there. We do not want everybody running in Lane One, you know, the interior lane. So yes, we'd like some rotation, especially for the recreational people, you know, use the other lanes, because it's only gonna help with the longevity of that track. So, those signs aren't up there yet. I know at one board meeting, we talked about putting a turnstile in to just physically restrict unwanted bikes and skateboards and everything else that might be out there.
So what was the status of the turnstile discussion?
We will, it'll be part of my five-year facilities plan that we are working on right now, which will be presented next couple of months or so. As far as the future, I don't have a price on it. Whether or not we put that as part of an operating budget project or not, you know, that'll be a future discussion.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Thank you for your staff and for the staff in the buildings and the students for accommodating this project. I know it displaced a lot of teams and whatnot, but thank you for being a com- I know it displaced a lot of teams and whatnot, but thank you for being accommodating and we're able to, like as Greg said, complete it on time and under budget. So that's great. Judy, at this time, did we want to mention about, I know you mentioned about a solar And that we may be discussing that at a future meeting?
Yeah, we have been trying to tap into some green energy and to also deliver some savings to the district and the cost of our energy. So Greg has worked to release some RFPs. We have the results back. We have a consultant who is helping us analyze them. And then they will come to the first meeting in November and present an overview of what is the project all about, and what does it look like, and where is the potential location? And we talked about doing some SNNs, just so we make sure the community is aware of that as well. So in about one month, you'll see that information.
Okay, and then we'll do some announcements ahead of time so community, we can have community members who want to come in and hear the presentation and issues about it. Go ahead.
That concludes our presentations for the evening, moving on. At this time, the board would recognize anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on a, on an agenda item, something that's specifically on the agenda. Anyone? No? Finance, it is, it's not my usual meeting thing.
It's hard to read this.
I know. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, A through F.
So move.
It's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Just, you know, with the audit report, technically, we just accept it. We're not voting on it. We just, you know, we just accept it. And also, on the same one, it's not the district audit committee. I know it's a technicality, but it's really the board audit committee because the purpose of it is to have oversight over the finances of the district. Otherwise, it would appear that the district was overseeing itself, which I know they do, but the purpose of it is for the board to have that oversight.
Okay. Any other further discussion?
The facilities committee met with Greg and went over the change orders, and we also had some discussions about how to use the funds that remain from the project.
So in regards to Lynn's comment, should the minutes of the meeting amend the, what's written here on the agenda to say board under B, board audit committee? Is that what you're suggesting, Lynn?
Right, it should be, I would even pull B out because we really just accept the audit. It's not like we're approving it.
Ms. Barrett understands the changes.
Right. So if that's permissible, can we vote on B separately? That change, just, we're just really voting to accept it.
Okay, well, can we note the change? Or just note the change? Note the change that we're accepting the audit report and the recommendation of the audit committee.
And it's the board audit committee, Brittany.
With those noted changes, and I also would like to, again, we have a donation that we're accepting on item C. Thank the BMA again for their generous donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Item number nine, professional personnel, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance, professional personnel action items, A through O.
So move.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Item number 10, support personnel, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the support personnel action items, A through L.
So move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Item number 11, correspondence for action, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the correspondence for action items, A through D.
So move. Second.
It's a first and a second. Any discussion? We do need to select someone to be the voting delegate for the NISBA conference that I previously had mentioned, so.
And an alternate.
And an alternate. Who would like to be the voting delegate?
I have to leave fairly early on Tuesday, so it will be...
Diane, Diane, and the alternate, Charmaine?
Is that okay?
Yep. So note that the vote D is for Diane as the delegate and Charmaine as the alternate. And also, we would support the proposed resolutions that NISBA has put forward. Don't we have to?
The resolutions committee.
Right?
That the resolutions committee has put forward.
Put forward, so note that as a change to the wording there, that we're voting to approve the resolutions put forward by NISBA.
Do we know what they are?
Yeah, we got it. It's an email.
Yeah, it came in an email. It's on the website.
Okay.
I think we also got our mail hangover booklet, we called it.
I don't think I got it. But anyway, okay.
Any further discussion?
I think we're trying to be green, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Recognition of visitors. Now, at this time, we would recognize any visitors in the audience who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. Future meetings, we have, next meetings are Wednesday, October 14th, there's a policy committee meeting at 5:30 PM here at the high school. Wednesday, October 21st is our next board meeting with an anticipated 6:00 PM executive session, 7:00 PM regular board meeting, and then Wednesday, November 4th, 6:00 PM executive session with 7:00 PM regular board meeting. The October 21st meeting is scheduled to be at the Eagle Elementary School, and the November 4th meeting is here at the high school.
And that's just a reminder to the board that I won't be here for the meeting on the 21st.
On the 21st, okay.
All right, and just ask that Ms. Barrett remind us multiple times that the location is at Eagle.
Right, which is only across the parking lot, so it shouldn't be too far.
Take it to loss.
Okay, we do not have a need to go back into executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Pig students, if you'd come up and do the sign-out sheets, and we can sign your papers if you need it.